All right, we will call to order tonight's select board meeting. Today is Monday, November tenth, twenty twenty-five. It is six oh one P M. We are meeting in the lower level of the Rutland Public Library. We have a five-member board tonight. We are being, we are on Zoom. We are live streamed and being recorded for YouTube posting. And before we get started, if we could stand for the pledge.
Praise your flag of the United States of America. I salute the republic before which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have Treasury warrant twenty-six dash ten and twenty-six dash P W ten. I took a quick look through. I didn't see anything crazy, anything we should know about, so?
No.
It was all pretty standard, okay. If there's no questions by the board, I'll entertain a motion. I move to approve Treasury warrant twenty-six dash ten and twenty-six dash P W ten.
Second motion.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion? All right, roll call, Alex.
Hold on, second and I.
One minute.
Max and.
Ledry. We have two sets of meeting minutes, one from our, the October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, which is the warrant placement meeting, as well as October twenty-seven, which was our regular meeting. These are both regular open meetings, so unless there's any concern, we can probably approve them together. Any questions or concerns? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve meeting minutes of October twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, warrant placement meeting in October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, regular meeting as presented. Second. Motion in a second, any questions, conversation? Okay, roll call, Alex.
Hold on, second and I.
One minute.
Max and I.
Ledry. Thank you. Is there anybody here for a public comment? Anybody on Zoom for a public comment?
Okay.
Okay. Moving into quickly, communications, member comments, announcements, town administrator update. Just a few brief updates for me. Just a reminder for Veterans Day tomorrow, the town offices, senior center, and the library will be closed in observance of the holiday. And just adding in also to all of our veteran residents and staff, past and present, we thank you for your service. Food drive is still ongoing. Donations can still be dropped off at the annex, and the donors can enter to win a gift basket. Thank you to everybody that's already donated. All the items will go to benefit the Rutland Food Pantry. Reminder to all that special town meeting is coming up on November twentieth at the Glenwood Elementary School. The warrant and all the supporting documentation are available on the town website, as well as in town hall. And for anybody that is interested, we do have town administrator interviews that are scheduled to take place on Wednesday and Thursday this week, the twelfth and the thirteenth. They will be open to the public, but will not be livestreamed or accessible via Zoom in fairness to the applicants, but we will be recording them for future YouTube posting. All I have, are there any other member comments?
Questions? How we doing on the food drive?
Amazing.
Really good.
Was it?
Yeah, the Food Pantry has already picked up twice in the last few days, because we've had so much for donations, which is really, really nice.
It's great to see the town supported.
Absolutely.
A follow-up question. What's the army truck?
That is Toys for Tots.
Yeah.
So that is off Sergeant Chauvin's personal vehicle that he's loaning out to the two Marines, one on the police department and one on the fire department in sponsorship of Toys for Tots. So if anyone can drop their presence off and throw them in the back of the truck.
All right, I guess I better get mine in now, okay. Thank you.
All right, if there's nothing else, I will turn it over to town administrator.
As you know, last Monday, FY twenty-seven budgets were due by the boards and commissions. We started formulating that. The finance team is working on preparing that, and that will be presented to the select board and the finance committee the first of December. Just chasing down a few small boards and commissions for their budgets, but other than that, everything is coming in as we expected. Tonight, I sent you out an email from the Wachusett Regional School District on the certified enrollment numbers. While the district as a whole, student population has gone down again. So one, that means this district will be in hold harmless again. The percentage of shift of students between all five towns, even though Rutland did lose a couple students, we did not lose as many as the other five towns. So our percentage of the pie is now larger than it was last year. So we're gonna get hit on both sides. So we are calculating that, and as more information comes forward, I'll bring that to your attention. As you know, we have the vacancy of the town planner, and the last meeting, the town accountant had given her notice to retire. Both job postings have been advertised. We are starting to receive applicants for both of those positions. We should have something for you at the next meeting moving that forward. D P W labor union negotiations will start this Thursday. Our goal is to finalize an agreement before the end of this calendar year to have in front of you, so we can have that reflected in our budget process for FY twenty-seven. Tax rate classification hearing is December first. Finance team has been working very, very hard. They're just waiting for next Thursday, town meeting to be complete. They are, the assumption right now, they got everything in the computer, that is everything passed, this is what it's gonna be, and they just hit send. So they'll make any final adjustments that Friday morning, and then they'll be sent off to Department of Revenue. The anticipation is our tax rate will be going down compared to this year, so. And that is all I have for you this evening.
Can I ask, with the department budgets coming in, how, how they followed the guidance?
Some did, some didn't, and they'll be broken out. So you can see what their FY twenty-five budget should have been with, you know, potential increases, but anything above and beyond will be a separate ask. Yeah.
Any questions?
Do you see that fundamentally changing the budget from the ones that have been coming in a little bit?
Some of, proposed some big changes within their budgets, and they've been told that they were gonna need to be able to justify that and quantify that and properly present it. But as of now, it's gonna be held off as a separate, you know, decision-making on the boards, you know, whether they wanna include that or not.
Nuts. All right, I'm moving quickly to appointments and resignations. We do have a resignation before us. Mr. Michael Pantos Junior has submitted his resignation from the C I P C. His letter was certified by the clerk's office, so we just need to accept the resignation. And then we can post the vacancy, see if we can get some more rights. Any questions, or I'll entertain a motion?
I move to accept the resignation of Michael Pantos Junior from the Capital Improvement Planning Committee.
Second.
Motion in a second, is there any discussion? Roll call, Alex.
Hold on, second and I.
One minute.
Max and I.
Ledry. All right, thank you, everyone. All right, moving into old business. First up, we have the town administrator interviews. We have Becca Meekins from Collins Center here for questions, but tonight, we really just wanted to have Becca just review the process for the interviews Thursday and Friday with the board.
Wednesday, Thursday.
I'm sorry, Wednesday and Thursday, thank you. With the board, as well as review the interview questions and finalize those questions as well. Becca, I will turn it over to you to review that process, please.
Thanks. Good evening. So tonight, your role tonight is to finalize the questions. So we had sent around a list of suggested questions, received a few edits, sent back out those edits. So in terms of what you need to do tonight, finalizing the questions, who will ask the questions? Typically, we see boards sort of assign questions, just to sort of keep the flow of the interview moving. In terms of thinking about what Wednesday and Thursday will actually look like, you know, you'll have an opportunity to meet with each candidate. There'll be three candidates, so there are two interviews scheduled for Wednesday evening, and then the third interviewer is scheduled for Thursday evening. Immediately following the third interviewer on Thursday evening, you'll be able to deliberate and ultimately make a decision. We strongly recommend that no deliberation take place after any of the interviews on Wednesday. That's really important. We ask that when you're going through the interview process to, you know, it's okay to ask follow-up questions, obviously, but to try to hold follow-up questions to the end of the question list. And the reason for that is you wanna make sure that you give every applicant the opportunity to answer all the questions. You don't wanna get wrapped up in a follow-up and then not get to the questions for one or more of the applicants. That can create challenges. In terms of the deliberation process, we sent out a little bit of guidance, but you know, the main takeaway for that is focus on the positives, obviously, when you're talking about why you wanna select a candidate. And yeah, I think that's it. I'm happy to answer any questions, concerns you might have about Wednesday and Thursday evening. I will not be there, Mary won't be there, but Tamika and the chief are gonna coordinate the interviewees coming in, so we'll make sure that somebody knows when the next interviewer is coming and to sort of shepherd that process. So I'm happy to answer questions, provide any additional information you might need.
I do have one, with regards to the, the questions. You know, I know we're reserving roughly an hour for each candidate. Is there, you know, given that we have potentially eleven to twelve questions, is there a time limit that we should try and hold to for the questions, or?
Yeah, I mean, you wanna be able to get, you know, you wanna be able to get through all the questions ideally. Do you have some two-part questions? I mean, if you end up sticking with the questions you have. You have a couple of two-part questions, so, you know, I would tell the interviewer, and we suggest is tell them when they come in, we have eleven questions, we have twelve questions, whatever, and you have forty-five minutes. So just be mindful of your time. And, you know, if you need to move somebody along, I think it's okay to do that. And, you know, sometimes it's, it's nice to tell them upfront, you know? If you're going on too long, we'll just move you along, because we wanna make sure we get through all the questions. That's the most important thing, and candidates are generally open to that.
Any questions from the board before we talk about the actual interview questions on the process?
I, I don't have any problem with discussing it through the chair. I, my only concern is, asking these questions, you have a follow-up question in your mind, so you write it down. Make sure we have enough time for a follow-up question. So in your experience, how do you see that for follow-up questions? Because they would come at the end.
Yeah, I mean, you do, that's why, you know, we give, we allot an hour, but we tell them forty-five minutes. You give yourself a little bit of a buffer there. People tend, not people, some candidates tend to talk more than others. And so that's why I say, if you notice that a candidate is sort of going on, it's appropriate to say, okay, we're gonna move on to the next question. It, it can be a challenge with the flow, having to write down, but it is really important that you ask the candidates the same set of questions. They get the same opportunity to answer the same set of questions, so that's why we suggest that.
Okay. Does that leave time for them to ask us questions?
Ideally, you know, it's up to you if you want to allow them to ask questions. We, you know, we've seen boards do it both ways. Some boards just say, you know, provide us with a closing statement. Some boards say, do you have any questions of us? Either or both are appropriate. But, you know, just be mindful of the time, that's all.
Okay, thank you.
If, I was gonna say, I'd like the idea of candidates being able to ask the board question, a question, but sometimes it, the answer becomes very cumbersome and time-consuming, because it's a five-member board, and everybody may feel that they need to contribute some portion. So I think be mindful, if we go with kind of the eleven to twelve questions, that just kind of lumping that in with a closing statement, and if they have any questions of us and there's time allowing, we can offer that as an option or something.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion. That's a good point. But I do believe that questions that candidates ask are just as important as the way they answer the questions that are provided. So it's a very important thing to me.
I guess we can discuss this, I don't know when, but if a question is asked, I'm gonna make a recommendation that it be through the chair, and if the chair feels that it should be just moved to some other member of the board, that the chair then should be, and that member agrees to take it. Otherwise, I think you get five different opinions, so starting that way, that's all.
Yeah, I think that's what Leo was kind of alluding to, is just they can, the conversation can go on forever if each board member wants to.
I mean, I, I agree with that, I just, then I'd be afraid of Jen speaking for all of us, and Becca, you know.
Well, no, I mean, she would then, if the question comes, even say, Alex, you wanna take this question?
Yeah, so I guess instead of, so you would just have to.
But even that, you know, everybody might have differing thoughts on whatever the question is and how they would, you know, it's, it's one board member that's responding.
I guess if we wanted to do that, and we could just literally take turns, just one person answers, and we go down the line, so it's more objective and fair, in a sense that.
Limited to twenty seconds.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I'd be open to that, if we wanna rotate through, if we, again, assuming that there's time permitted, I think. My opinion is that it's important for us to hear what the candidates have to say with, you know, with the interview questions. I don't disagree, Alex, that seeing what questions they would ask is, you know, also potentially eye-opening, but I think we should leave that for when we get through. Again, just for consistency with the candidates and having the same conversation and making, seeing how they all respond to the same questions, for us to have that, that deliberation, I think is gonna be important, so. But I'm, if we have time, again, allowing them to ask questions and then rotating through the board for answering it, the board's amenable to that.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah, we could quite, I mean, maybe having two people, two board members answer each question, so we get at least two differing. So if they do ask a question, just do one, two, three, four, five, six, so. Just to keep it very objective and even, but also give varying opinions, so that we're not just having one opinion. So maybe that's the fairest way. But yeah, I mean, questions seem pretty straightforward to me.
I mean, we can certainly move into if, if anybody has questions or thoughts on the actual questions themselves.
Thought we weren't discussing the actual questions themselves, though.
Well, we need, we can.
Discuss a question.
Yeah, we just can't.
We need to finalize them tonight.
We just, yeah, we need to finalize them, so we can talk about them, we just can't.
We can't discuss the candidates tonight.
Okay. I misunderstood, an email there on the chain, never mind, sorry.
I, I don't have personally, through the chair, I don't have, I guess, any issues with these questions, as long as we have time for follow-up, because I don't know what will come out of these questions, so. I don't know what I might be looking for, so. I, I mean, if we wanna cut it down, I guess number nine, maybe, I would cut number nine down, if anything, for their comment on internet search, because maybe they could, we could, or they could do that in the two-minute closing, I don't know. But, I mean, that would just add a couple of minutes to each one, that's all. It's not like it would be a big deal.
Can I ask if, if there was a candidate that kind of stood out, but we did want to have a follow-up, but we weren't? Is, is it, is there a process for inviting that candidate to come back to ask additional questions, or is this kind of a?
No, this would be, you need to try to get everything in.
Okay.
You know, I, I would say, the, the most important thing is the time with each candidate. And so if, if you need to take a little more time to make sure that you get what you need from the candidate, I think that's okay. I'm not talking about two hours, but I'm talking about, you know, if you go over by ten minutes, I think it's, it's gonna be okay. You know, I wouldn't, I wouldn't stress out too much about that. But this, this is the opportunity. I mean, it's the one downside of this process, is that you kind of get one shot, you get one bite at the apple here. So whatever you feel like you need to ask, this is the opportunity to ask it.
Okay, so I, I guess for the board, if there's a follow-up question that you feel very strongly that you need to get clarification on, or ask a candidate of, you know, make sure that we're aware of that, so we can get that. If you need that information to help you make a choice.
Sorry, I have a question for, and this relates specifically to number nine. Is this a question that kind of the Collins Center recommends asking? I just worry that it can potentially open up. Candidates may not want to speak about it for various reasons, and so I'm not sure if it's an appropriate question to ask or not.
It, it's an appropriate question. I would say that if a candidate doesn't want to tell you something, they'll, they'll tell you that. And, you know, generally, all of your, all of the candidates have been town administrators before, or managers. So they understand what it means to be in the public, to be in the paper, to work for elected board. So they should all be comfortable and familiar with that question. So I don't have a concern with the question, but if you don't feel like it's something that you need to probe into, then certainly eliminate the question. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I get, through the chair? I guess first off, we have done a social media internet search, okay? We're gonna do that regardless, okay? But then it says, what did we find that you feel you want to comment on or explain? So if we do the internet search, do we then come out and say, look, we find this about you? Do you wanna explain yourself?
You don't need to specify.
And that kind of throws it off a little bit, you know? I kinda, I don't know if I'm saying it right.
Yeah, I mean, well, let me, anybody who's been a town administrator or manager is going to be on the internet, in, on social media in some way, shape, or form. So all of them, if there is something that they want to address, they will know what it is, and they will address it in the moment. If there's something specific that you find that you want to ask them about, that is probably of, like something in the, you know, you read something, an article online, that would be a follow-up that you would ask later, not something that you would ask right on, right away. So the question really is, if the, if you want to probe about this, meaning you have a concern, or then you would leave it, and then you would have the ability to probe about it later on. If you don't have concerns, then again, like I said, in the interest of time, eliminate the question. It's not, you know, none of these candidates have a criminal, you know, no background that would, you know, raise that kind of flag. They all have been in the paper, because they all have held this job before, and that's the reality of the job.
Would, pardon me, would it be safe to assume that they would be looking into the town of Rutland and just around the areas to see what is really?
The candidates?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I, yeah, certainly. I think that's part of the, certainly there are questions on here that sort of get at that, but that's something that you, I would think certainly would want to know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So how does the, the board feel about number nine? Did you wanna keep it, or do we want to eliminate that?
I'm, I mean, I'm, I'm personally comfortable keeping it. I just wanted to get a little bit of the take on how much, I guess a little bit, how much probing is appropriate for the board to do? Because I also don't, I, I realize that there can be some gray areas on that side as well, so.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that we were, the board, okay with the question, but then also the, the level of potential follow-up.
Right. Yeah. I mean, any, any candidate who, there is something out there in the public, they know about it, and they've had to address it before, because they've all done this job before. So I don't, I, I, it's like, I don't think it's gonna be like a curveball from you, you know? Though I, I would think they would be prepared to answer.
Yeah, I mean, I've done some search already on clients, so that was my concern, that some of the stuff I found, I don't know if I wanna broach them on it, okay? So, but if I don't, then it's clouded in my mind, I'm not feeling I'm a fair shot to answer the question either. So I, I guess for me, I'd keep, now that we've discussed it, I'd keep number nine.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
One of the other things I was trying to figure out how to fit in somewhere is, you know, related to some of the, the budget, budgeting questions, is experience dealing with structural deficits and how we can correct it. I don't know if that's something that would naturally come up in one of these questions, or if one of them should be a little bit more targeted, how the board feels about that specifically.
I mean, I think that, that is applicable to both three and four, so I'm not sure that it really needs to be.
If, if I'm, I think some of that's a little bit, at the guidance from the board, right? Because a structural deficit is a structural deficit. It's either going to need corrective action one way or the other. Either we're cutting the, the budget and services, or we're maintaining the services or expanding, and that's through an override, like where we are as a community. So I think that that's more of a policy from, directive from the board, and I think personally, it may put an administrator on the spot, not knowing kind of the, the will of the board. I think if you read any of the publications out from across the state, that all, most small communities, most communities in Massachusetts are dealing with this. It's really hitting the small communities. And so there's a lot more than just a, a one person and five-member board, I think, personally. So I like the two questions kind of about budgeting style and handling difficult decisions. I think that that speaks a little bit to it, but I think that, for me personally, I don't know how the rest of the board feels.
Nope, that's, that's fine. Great. Any other thoughts or edits, suggestions? From the board?
I think, again, those two covered pretty well.
Yeah, I mean, the closing statement, as mentioned, is, is one of the questions too, so I mean, it's, technically, we can get rid of that question, have them do a closing statement, it's not really matter, but.
Yeah. Okay. All right, so is the board comfortable with the interview questions as presented? Okay, and we will just have the office go through and can assign members to, to read each question? Or is everybody, like, kind of like we do with the Warren article, is everybody comfortable with that?
Do you want more spacing for, to write in?
Yes, please, I was going to ask.
Do you, do you want like a scale of one through five, so you can circle and highlight? You want anything like that first?
I find.
So you can mentally score them?
Personally, I was fine.
Actually, I've done it all.
Definitely more space for me. I don't mind writing kind of a one through five, but if it's easier to have it printed out, and if we wanna use it, you know, for ourselves, we can.
Yeah.
I was also going to ask if we can please be assigned the same question for every candidate.
Correct.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Yep. Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good.
Sounds good, okay. Do you need a motion or anything, or?
Can, through, through the chair. On Thursday, Becca, you had mentioned the deliberations, and obviously you wanna speak positive about three candidates. I just want the board to have an understanding what they can come away with that night. Is, they have, do they have the opportunity to bring one or two candidates back for the second interview? If, if they chose to?
Yeah, I mean, the board can do whatever it likes. You know, we don't, the, the risk there is that you will, you might lose people.
Okay.
That, that's the, that's the only risk there.
Yeah.
So just, it, we would never recommend that you make a decision just to make a decision, right? Like, don't, don't do that. If you feel like you need more information, you need more time, whatever, that's fine.
Okay.
But just know the risk of prolonging the process means. Um but just know the risk of prolonging the process means losing candidates, that's all.
Alright, so you have that option, obviously come to an agreement on one of the candidates.
Yep.
And you know, potentially make make a motion to enter into negotiations, hopefully successful. And the last one obviously would be they choose not to continue and to start the process over. So those are really the the options they have, okay?
Anything else from the board on the interviews? Yeah, so we're we're good with the questions as presented and we'll. Look forward to Wednesday. Thank you, Becca. Appreciate you coming.
Um sorry, can I interrupt? Um it seems like there's no volume on the Rutland one ninety-two channel, Zoom can hear us, but cable access can't.
I had that problem last time, I was listening to the meeting.
That's what they were saying, FinCom was the last the same last week with um. It was the same, they said it was the same with FinCom and the.
Yeah, with FinCom, it took about maybe twenty minutes and then it came on. Yeah, I'll be listening to it, but. And I haven't learned yet how to read sign language or speaking.
Can't read lips, not yet.
Camera moves too fast.
Um, okay, um, does anybody mind, um, since we have a representative here? If we um move into new business for the Watchus at Greenways letter? Just so she doesn't have to sit through, is that anybody okay with that?
We have somebody here?
Yes, just just so that she's got, thank you. Um so we have um Watchus at Greenways, uh the request for letter of support for the Mass Central Rail Trail.
So I see. Glad to be here, so I'm calling Abrams and this is the thirtieth year for Watchus at Greenways. And our primary mission is building the Mass Central Rail Trail between Sterling and Berry. And that's about thirty miles, we're not done yet, if we did a mile every year, we should be done. Uh but we have, I don't know, probably six or eight more projects, more little segments to complete. And from the beginning, uh with the enthusiasm of Ed Yaglu. Who was the former superintendent of this school system. We thought that the best idea was to have the rail trail between Northampton and Boston. So we held a gathering of people from across the state, it happened to take place in West Boilston. And it seemed that there's a a will and an enthusiasm for having this. This connection that's basically a spine for other shared use paths and. Rail trails, different kinds of trails across the Commonwealth going north and south, but we're the central. And you are the center of the Commonwealth, so that is a good thing. And Watchus at Greenways actually purchased a little house at twenty-one Miles Road in Rutland. With the goal of having it become the center headquarters for Watchus at Greenways and a welcome center. And we still have that goal, but we haven't opened it yet, but hopefully soon. Uh so the first thing is just to say thank you because Rutland has shared this vision. Residents and the town as a whole from the beginning and we're grateful for that. And also to share our gratitude for your support for annual operating costs. Which Rutland has committed for many years, um and which also at various times the Rutland uh fire. Is that right? Also was kind of in the early years, like, we can do this and. But the town of Rutland as a as an entity has been supporting for many years and we really appreciate that. We hope that all eight of our towns continue to support. Uh and those towns being Berry, Holden, Oakham, Paxton, Princeton, Rutland, Sterling and West Boilston. All good towns and. The primary purpose of being here tonight is to ask you to sign a letter that says to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. To our leaders, whoever they might be, that the town of Rutland encourages and supports the completion of the Mass Central Rail Trail. Not as a you do it government, but as a we all do it together. But that it it retains its position as being an important spine trail for the Commonwealth. And a group, the Mass Central Rail Trail Alliance. Of which Watchus at Greenways is a participating member, is the sponsor of this letter. And who's being asked to sign it are all the towns along the trail. And now the co- the alliance hasn't necessarily asked that Princeton and Paxton sign the letter, but we're asking them. Because they are very much a part of this group and this coalition of Watchus at Greenways. So that's that's it, you have that letter in your packet, uh you're welcome to make any changes you like to it. But the idea would be that you would all sign it, uh along with Seth as the acting town administrator. And I always think that the town assistant. Um executives should also be signing it because they do the work, okay? Uh but that's that's up to you all. So. Other than that, to also say that a thank you to the town for helping out with some of the maintenance. When occasionally when there's machine maintenance needed, there have been some hazard trees that the town has has come in and cut. It's just really great that the DPW, we kinda did a partner project when we replaced the culvert at Miles Road. That was blocking the road that was affecting the school and everybody kinda, you know, was all hands on deck and the job got done, so we were super grateful for that. Um what else do I wanna say? One of the other things that this alliance is about to do is add information about each town along the rail trail. Onto the website and also Watchus at Greenways will do something similar. So we're hoping that maybe somebody who's listening tonight or one of you or someone from Rutland Historical Society. Will have ideas as to what should we highlight for the town of Rutland and for each town. We don't separate out each town because a lot of trail sections run right over town borders and our whole point is this group. But we also do wanna point out the the uh just valuable things about a town. And I won't start naming them cause I'll I'll name the, I won't name all the right ones, but. We we really would appreciate anything that anyone wants to share, either through the select board, through the town administrator. Or by contacting Watchus at Greenways, but we would appreciate that. You know, we might miss things that you would like us to to share.
I have a question, I don't wanna interrupt. Are you, I don't wanna interrupt you if you have.
Absolutely, please do.
Have you reached out to CMRPC, um Central Mass Regional Planning Commission? I ask because uh maybe a year or so ago, they had done a big um seminar on economic development along the rail trails. And they were kind of encouraging um like uh Airbnb, not Airbnbs, but bed and breakfasts. To eh to try to become more prevalent along the rail trail throughout the state. Because then it helps on the economic development side, so I know from a Rutland perspective, they very much know how much. We appreciate the um rail trail and view it as, you know, a big driving force for our residents. As well as a potential opportunity for economic development if we can ever get there. Um so I just was wondering if you had reached out to CMRPC or any of the other regional planning commissions to get their kind of backing also.
We've had a relationship with CMRPC and MRPC, cause Sterling is in the is in the Massachusetts region. Um for right from the beginning, really. Uh and we attended the state con- state rail trail, not, no, sorry. State Trail Conference, which was held in Worcester for a change, everything is usually in Boston, Boston, but they held it in Worcester. And CMR actually participated in the panel discussion of trails for with CMRPC. Trying to think, Nate Nathan Lewis um was a Watchus at Earth Day volunteer, his mother was a volunteer. He works for CMRPC, he also works with with uh Worcester Earnabike. Uh so there's a there's like a lot of connections over the years, but I hadn't specifically thought about the Airbnb. There was, we've had, from the beginning, we had tours on the trail going across the state. Um Mass Bike, I think, was involved with one of the first ones. And Ed Yaglu called the Square Dance, we actually held that in Rutland. Where were we? I don't know where we were, but anyway, he called it and the bicyclists danced and it was festive and. And we know that we need not just Rutland, but this whole area, Central Mass needs more more lodging.
And it wasn't, sorry, it wasn't specifically Airbnb, they were looking more for like bed and breakfast kind of setups, like a little bit more.
You probably didn't say.
No, I think I did, but, no, no, I think I said, I, but, no, but just kind of that lodging to promote the local. More local tourism, I guess.
Yes, and and just, I mean, we do have, we have gatherings, like the people who, the the directors of Mass Trails came from Northampton. They met and we actually met on the trail close to Charnock. And then I suggested the various restaurants where they could have lunch and they did right here in Rutland. I accidentally met someone who flew from Germany, got off the plane in Boston, rode his bike out here. And he was starting off on his ride across the country and I met him in Rutland. And and then he sent a message after he got back home, so. I don't know where he stayed altogether, but we do need more, yes, that's good. Uh, okay, other than that, I just wanted to give you a quick update on, I don't wanna take your whole night and I know you've got a big job ahead of you. You need a lot of sleep to do this selection process, I I laud you for doing it, cause I know it's not easy. And I hope you find someone who just settles right in and is is a wonderful, a blessing here. Uh so. We talked about the website, I just wanted to tell you that we just completed a section of the trail in Holden. That makes now a nine mile section between the entrance at West Boilston out to Princeton Street in Holden. And thank you for those who came and joined us at the at the dedication. We haven't been having dedications so much of recent years, but it was fun to do it. And next up is Rutland, so the approach to Whitehall Road at Rutland State Park, we did receive a Mass Trails grant. Very generous and helpful, we have to pay it all upfront and we pay a twenty percent portion. And then they return the the eighty percent. And it's been working really well, this whole formula for a long time and they're very helpful and supportive. And that is basically a horseshoe, which we did in Holden between Manning Street and River Street. Just to get rid of that kind of steep slope that brings you right down across the Rutland State Park Entrance Road. You know, just just a little too steep there, it's not horrible, but this is gonna be an improvement and the goal is to make the whole thing accessible. A couple sections we created were not accessible. And one of our users asked us to add a wheelchair to the MCRT logo, so the wheelchair is coming on, we're about to start putting up signs. Our signage is terrible, that's not good for tourism, we're going to improve our signage, we promise that every year. I don't know how soon, but that is our intent. Uh the next important, really high priority project, uh it it almost rivals. The two projects that happened here in Rutland with the underpass, we call it the tunnel at Charnock and the tunnel here at Palma Gasset. And those two we got through with, you know, using our sort of piece it together. Uh engineering and and economics and got the job done, also with the support of Rutland. And especially with Charnock, cause they helped with the actual labor of doing it. Uh the next one is in West Boilston and it's the one forty Causeway. Challenging and exciting bridge, but that will allow the trail to connect both going north towards Lemonster and Fitchburg and also going east. So it's a very important project and we hope that all the towns will still keep the drumbeat going for that one. And lastly, this past three Saturdays, we've been working at the Charnock Cut. And worked with forty Cub Scouts from Holden, we work with Deveraux students every Thursday afternoon. We worked with the WPI Alpha Phi Omega, uh they're a fraternity for service. And they have been fabulous for twenty years, uh who else? Watchus at Greenways, regular volunteers, so just to say that that Charnock Cut takes a takes a labor every year, some some labor of love. But that's that's what we do and we thank you and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
I have one more question, thank you so much for the the summary and everything. Um in Rutland, what pieces still need to be done? I know the Holden, the like the Holden Jefferson to Rutland piece essentially, right? Um is outstanding and is there anything else then in Rutland itself?
So in Rutland, we still have a connection going um between Glenwood Road and uh Watchus at Street. And we have a few ideas for connections on, every place where there's a gap, we have various ways to possibly complete that gap. Uh and at Miles Road, we need to, we need to make the connection, we wanna get them off Miles Road. And that is using that land, that property that we have with the little brown house and. Just, it's just gonna be a little, it'll be another kind of a little loop and get you back down the street into.
And would that be an over Miles Road crossing still and just take you off the, so you would.
Yes, you have to cross, yeah.
Right, you would cross over and then.
Cross the road and then you're on the the brown house.
That section's dangerous with the corner and that section's dangerous on on the road with the corner and everything.
Yeah, it's terrible and the and the very kind neighbors have suggested that, why are you, why are you taking so long to get this done? So we have in mind to do it soon.
Thank you.
Through the chair, uh do we have a, do we pay a fee to Greenways every year to help them out?
Uh we have in the past.
We haven't been?
We have, yes.
Okay.
Yes, we are addressing the, it was not funded this fiscal year and we are trying to address that.
And what do we normally contribute to?
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred? And I guess from the conversation that we pay our fifteen hundred. And that Greenways is not looking for any more money from Rutland to finish these projects.
Right, this letter, so so what we ask from the towns is as eh as they are able, when needed. Some help with machine maintenance and over the years, they've written letters and supported and indicated that they would do that. It's a very uh, you know, it's not a, it's not a regulated kind of a thing, it happens when it can happen. And people have been quite helpful. And other than that, our total annual budget without hiring someone, which will have to happen because, you know, let's see this and. It's eh we were gonna need to hire somebody, we've had a part-time uh college student, we hired briefly mostly for the summer. A couple times, but eventually that will happen. But the, our total budget is between fifty and sixty thousand for just basic annual expenses. Porta potties alone are over twelve thousand, well now they're over fourteen thousand, cause when you build more trail, you need more porta potties. Um and so basically all eight towns together. Contribute about, you know, twenty percent of our annual operating budget. None of this has anything to do with construction or major restoration. So we have a fund called the Edward P. Yaglu Fund, which is for major restoration and repair of the trail. And all the money that goes there helps out, like we need to resurface or do a parking lot, something like that. And then we also have a construction fund and that's also donations for that construction fund. And everything goes straight into that, so we don't ask the towns to contribute to the construction, although. You know, Rutland did help with some of the early construction, Holden helped with some of the early construction. West Boilston, so towns have actually helped along the way, we don't wanna imply that they haven't and businesses have donated. Um in Rutland, uh come on. They lost their daughter. She just came in here and now she's gonna tell us, okay, so Gangle, yes. What is his first name? Okay, so they supported by building a section of the trail and did a beautiful job, so eh and then Sterling also was a business. So we've had support from foundations, from individuals, takes a lot of different contributors. But we're super grateful for each town making a modest support for the annual operating expenses, I think that model works and. You know, I I think the people can help make the trail happen. But I think that a place to go for a walk or a place to go for a bicycle run is hugely important in every single town. And they just did a national news article on television this week. I don't know what station, cause it's like, as soon as the weather's done, I turn it off, but um. The news reporting crew all said how important it is. And two or three towns in Massachusetts were voted the best places to retire, why? They immediately started talking about because they have places to go to walk, so it's it's a real thing. And we're grateful to have it.
Thank you for all the work for that you do, I I enjoy the trails, my family enjoys the trails. Um during COVID, we were out on the rail trail all the time and it's crazy to see how much more busy they've become. Over the course since we moved into town in twenty-ten um to now, it's leaps and bounds busier with. People of all ages enjoying, so thank you.
It is, it's fun to see the the little ones and the old ones and all the ones in between, so.
So thank you.
Thank you all.
Other questions for Colin? Questions on the the letter and the packets?
Um I I I do have a comment on the letter in the packet and that is. I'll be honest, uh, I have a problem in this budget year of spending fifteen hundred dollars for Greenways when we can't even give our own elected officials their stipends. I have a big problem with that. As far as the letter is concerned, I don't have a problem, but I feel kind of like if I'm not for the fifteen hundred dollars contribution to Greenways, then that would be kind of on on, on, kinda like bad to support the letter if I can't support Greenways that way. But I, uh, that's a problem I have.
Through the chair. Uh, Harry, the, the letter has nothing to do with the funding for the town. This is the support for them to try to get state money to continue the process.
I understand, but I feel bad saying, I'll support you, but I don't, I don't wanna give you any money.
Gotcha, understood.
Okay, because we're not even paying our own people what they should have.
I think the letter's great and I think, you know, obviously any opportunity to get grant money or other funding sources is hugely beneficial for the, for the rail trail, for Watchus at Greenways, for the Mass Central Rail Trail as a whole and for our community too, so. Um, I fully support the letter and.
I, I, I agree. I, I support the letter. I understand where you're coming from, Harry, with that. And I think we can, as a board, with our budget discussions, we can continue to discuss that contribution. Is it a part of everything else that we need to talk about? But I, I can't say that it would still change my support for what your mission is and what you're accomplishing.
Well, I, I, I fully agree with you. I just, I'm having an internal moral issue.
Understood, understood.
Okay.
Yep.
That's all.
Any other questions, comments? Entertain a motion?
I would move to sign the letter of support for Watchus at Greenways as presented.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Alex?
Ola.
Sekmanai.
Sekmanai.
Matt's an eye.
Ledger eye.
Now that you've voted, would it be acceptable for me to make a comment about the contribution? Okay, so I understand what you're saying. And you're not the first town that said we are facing dire financial times and we've had to let people go. So, it isn't even really about a stipend. We've actually let people go on our staff and we don't know if we can support you. And so this is what I've said to those places, those towns. Please do not remove us from your fold. Please give us what you can. And one year in a conversation with the Rutland chairman of the finance committee, I think, the conversation was for me, if you can, if you can give a hundred dollars this year and keep us in your fold, then we'll move with that. And hopefully next year you'll be back to giving us a, a more robust gift to help. One porta potty costs about thirteen hundred dollars for a little more than that. And that's where the company giving us a huge discount compared to what, you know, United, or some other companies give. So, uh, some other companies. So I just, I just wanna say, we appreciate it. You know, we don't have a cer, we don't have an amount per person in the town. We don't have an amount fee, but we, we feel that it, the, the one thing that I would say is it, we're, it's not other. We are, we belong to you as a region. And the reason this trail works is because we became regional right away. We were, we were put together as a task force in Holden in nineteen ninety-four and almost immediately we went regional. We didn't, we were invited to participate with Worcester, but it didn't seem like the fit. We really wanted to be this region to make the trail and trails, you know. We're not, we're not necessarily done when we get done with the MCRT. In fact, in our agreement with the DCR, it says that we're not limited to the Mass Central Rail Trail. So I'm interested to know what they mean by that. We haven't signed the new version, so we'll find out. So anyway, we're gonna keep going. And we appreciate being in the fold however you can do it. And we're, there's no, there's no angst and no shame for whatever you need to do any given year.
Thank you.
And you don't need to feel guilty, but thank you. Yes, I, I, I agree with, now, I actually agree with your moral dilemma because to sign and say you do it isn't any good. And people say that to us all the time on the trail. Why isn't the state doing this? Why aren't you getting, coming out and helping and thank you for helping? But then we don't wanna make them feel guilty. We want them to enjoy the trail. Walk on, ride on, and maybe when you retire, you'll come and help us. So, there it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming out. All right, um, we'll move back up into our old business. Um, we have the social equity policy. Um, so this is for the, um, host community agreement policy. We did make some revisions based on the board's, um, last commentary. Those are highlighted in the policy, um, and the application requirements that are in your packets. So I'll start there to see if the board has any, before we move into the rubric discussion, does the board have any questions or concerns with the modifications that were made? Um, and then the second piece was, uh, and the primary reason for tonight is the rubric discussion. So we did confirm with town council that we do have to have one as part of this application process. Um, so there's a couple, there's two in here. The spreadsheet is.
If I may, Jen, so the spreadsheet is just for the purpose of tallying up the different categories.
Okay, for what's been presented. Okay, gotcha, thank you. So. It's, it's my understanding that there's no, call it rhyme or reason for how we want to other than the, the twenty-five point equity?
Yeah, social.
Portion, social equity. Um, every other section and how we decide to score it is all up to the individual town. So, um, again, just to, for me, looking at the one that's been presented here that, um, that Southern Smiga went through and, and worked on, this makes it much clearer as to what the areas of consideration would be. Um, and then you have the points that are assigned and then that's, that's what's tallied up. And then this is the, the rubric that would be used by the town administrator and, um, the town administrators per the policy, the screening committee that they would appoint based with, with the employees to go through and do this.
I have one question.
On, on page seven, the first page of the scoring rubric, the evaluation form. Where it says applicants who score an eighty-five or higher on this form will be invited to enter into negotiations for an HCA. What if we have multiple applicants that score an eighty-five or higher? Are, and, but we only have one slot?
Sure question.
Could it just even be applicants must score an eighty-five or higher to be considered?
Yep.
To enter, considered for negotiations or something? I don't know the legal language, but I understand what you're trying to say is that eighty-five is the minimum. But I'm just thinking if we have, we know we have limited kind of
Capacity.
Right, yeah, licenses and if there's multiple applicants um, that score as well, the way it's written now, I can see that being, uh.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's a good point to leave it open for, cause how do you decide between those applicants?
Okay.
Yep.
So applicants must score a minimum of an eighty-five to be considered
Yep.
For negotiations for an HCI, HCI or something?
Yeah.
So, are you asking, change the word invited to consider?
Yes.
Yes.
Essentially, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, considered. So it's not saying must, but.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
Cause you have to decide between, you can't, you can't have two or three if you've only got one. Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Any concerns or questions with the rubric itself?
We used to use a, through the chair, we used to use something like this for CIPC. And I know when it says zero to ten, you could end up with seven and a half. So it doesn't have to be one or ten, so. You know, this is, this is okay, yeah.
The amount of times it's gonna get used.
Exactly.
So the amount of times it's gonna get used.
Right.
Yeah, right.
Yep.
Yeah.
Uh, once this is done, we can start building out the town webpage to include all that.
Because there's a lot that has to go on.
I think the breakdown, uh, so legal compliance is a total of twenty-five points. Community impact and benefits, a total of twenty points. Um, transparency and accountability for a total of fifteen points. Community compatibility for a total of fifteen points. Um, social equity and inclusion is the mandatory twenty-five points. Um, and then the negotiation fairness and process integrity of ten points.
This came right off the cannabis website, I mean from the state.
Yeah, it was a template they gave us.
Okay.
Yep.
I, I will say a comment. I, I do find it amazing that we're gonna give zero to ten points for something that's statutory.
Yep. So they either have it or they don't.
Yeah. And if you have a zero on that, it doesn't go very far after that.
I mean, I'm comfortable with it.
I am as well. Paul, any concerns, comments?
Like our town administrator said, for the number of times it gets used.
Right. On this, Paul, you're comfortable?
Yep, that's good.
So then I would move to adopt the, um, the plan to comply with Cannabis Control Commission equity mandates and host community agreements policy as presented, uh, with the, with
With a friendly amendment.
With the amendment, um, on the sc, on the scoring to enter into HCA.
Yep.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? All right, I'll call Alex.
Sekmanai.
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 Matt's an eye.
Ledger eye.
All right, um, we have, back into new business, we have a stormwater abatement request that, um, was sent to us from our treasurer collector. This is for a stormwater bill that was incorrectly assessed to Harmony Place. Um, and I believe this parcel is no longer in existence. That's since been corrected within the system, so they won't be issued any future. Um, stormwater bills, um, and this is, it's now because there's, um, homes being built there. Each individual parcel as they come up will be assessed, the stormwater fee. So, this is per the recommendation of the treasurer collector to, um, abate this request. Questions?
I, I don't have any questions. I just wanna, I, I think the stormwater piece has, um, been a lot of time and, um, energy on, on the billing side for treasurer collector as well as the assessor, I believe. So I just wanna thank them, um, all of staff, but those two especially for um, putting the time in as it gets streamlined and the process is better, um, realized.
There's no questions, I will entertain a motion?
I move to grant the stormwater abatement for eighty-six Maple Ave as requested by, uh, eighty-six Maple Ave parcel forty-one dash A dash three, um, as requested by the treasurer collector.
Second.
Motion second, any further discussion? All right, I'll call Alex.
Ola.
Sekmanai.
Sekmanai.
Matt's an eye.
Ledger eye. Thank you.
Uh, next one we have is the Watchus at Earth Day contract. Uh, this was I might, Seth, I, I might have you look to me to review this.
Uh, this came in, um, probably in the spring and it just got lost in emails and shuffled around. Um, it was finally brought to our attention, uh, mid to late September. Yeah, we're, I think we're the only town that's left to sign. Um, we did budget for it, uh, so we do have the funds available, uh, for this. Uh, we just need to, uh, sign the agreement.
And just for clarification, we, this is for the budget that we're looking to pass at town special town meeting.
No, this is, was budgeted prior to this.
Oh, it was, okay.
This was, yes.
I apologize. We discovered that a, after we sent this out, um, when looking to see if we had a budget this year for, um, Watchus at Greenways, we realized that it was sep, they had separated it out into its own line item where it used to be housed under a different part of the budget, so that's why we didn't see it. So we do actually have the funds.
Okay, perfect. All right, excellent. So we just need to sign the exist, the agreement, because, okay. Um, so we have that and do we wanna talk about the continued participation? Is that anything the board is interested in discussing?
Madam Chair. I see the, the agreement shall be effective July first. What's the, uh, is this in every year?
Um, I don't think it is in every year.
The assessment.
The assessment's every year. Um, I don't know how long the term is.
I didn't see in here where it said that.
You've never seen this one, country, yeah.
Every three years.
Okay.
You see it?
Yeah, this agreement may be renewable every three years thereafter for a maximum of twenty-five years from the initial date. The agreement of June two thousand and eight.
And we did find that the towns looking to leave need to provide a twelve month notice.
And what's our annual fee for this?
Sixty-five hundred.
Sixty-five hundred?
Yep.
Do we ever get a report of how many people from the town use it?
Uh, we can ask for that. Um, I can honestly say the DPW, um, uses it quite frequently.
Okay.
Um, I, I know all town departments use it quite frequently, um, to get rid of, um, we took a dump truck load of old computer electronics, uh, a few years back. We loaded the whole thing up and drove it over there. And, um, they, they took it all, without, no questions, so.
And we didn't pay for that?
We did not.
So, because then I go there as a citizen?
You pay.
I pay.
You pay, yes.
Trying to figure out the sixty-five hundred here.
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
But I think we pay, as residents, we pay less than if we contracted for many items, what, if we had to contract with our trash hauler or take it somewhere else, um, for individual.
Better than having it on the side of the road. And then we ended up paying for it anyway.
And they prioritize reuse, recycling and reuse and not just.
I mean, we get our money's worth for what the town does.
Absolutely, so, yeah.
Any other questions? Let's all entertain a motion?
I would move to sign the MOU with the Watchus at Earth Day for fiscal year twenty twenty-six as presented contingent upon funding. Oh, everybody has funding, sorry, period, just as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Alex?
Ola.
Sekmanai.
Sekmanai.
Pardon me, Matt's an eye.
Ledger eye.
And just, sorry, a little bit of history there. I know that that, since I've been on the board, that line item has bounced around from
It's been the trash line item for a while.
Then it was total DPW, then sometimes it's been pulled out and I think it just depends on
It's a standalone line item, so it's clear.
Right.
Yeah, so you can't miss it.
Right.
Yep.
All right, uh, moving into the wage classification schedule, I am going to turn it over to Seth to
Okay.
Guide the board.
Um, two weeks ago, we brought up, um, how we're moving al, moving along with the, uh, job descriptions. So, we now have a, a book full of all non-union town employee job descriptions from department heads down to seasonal, um, summer help, um, for rec, uh, as well. So ev, every position at town has been done. Um, they've been sent out to all the department heads for their final review. Uh, each job had a job analyst questionnaire that was filled out by the, uh, sitting employee that basically, uh, allowed them the opportunity to, uh, make sure that the tasks that they are now responsible for, uh, how the job has evolved over the years to make sure that we are incorporating all the changes into the job description. We're trying to set the job description up for success, so it may not be specific to the person that's in the job, but it's specific to the person that would, could potentially be replacing that individual from now going forward. Um, so the job description has been done. Um, we've taken a look at our old, uh, wage and classification or our wage chart uh, that dates back to two thousand sixteen, um, as of today, um, of the non-union employees. Um, currently, we have twelve, um, that do not fall anywhere on that scale, uh, because the scale has not been maintained. Um, and it didn't really show a good progression and it was why people never move steps over the years because Why people never move steps over the years, because the steps were too big, there were four and a half percent between steps and it was too much of a. A COLA plus a four and a half percent and financially the town could not do it. And so people got left behind, whatever, uh whatever happened in the past happened in the past, we're trying to address that. Um as you know, we looked at, the clerical union was the first union to come forward with a new wage uh chart, it was a ten step process. And according to our town uh personnel policy and employee handbook. In order to move steps now, it's based on performance, um so now the steps to move a step, you have a successful performance evaluation done in January. You're eligible for that step come July first. Um so we're just trying to set this all up, you had um reviewed and incorporated the um. Personnel policy several years ago, now we're just following through with the whole process. Uh so the clerical union was the first union, uh the firefighter's union was the second union, it's coming in with the same type of scale, same process of steps. Um based on merit, um our proposal is to do the same thing with the DPW, um that's what our first proposal will be this week, is the same type of scale. Um so we're trying to move everyone towards that. Um later on tonight, we'll talk about a contract and there's other contracts that are coming up, we're going to try to tie. Uh individual employment contracts to this scale as well. And then the scale will uh move based on COLA, which at whatever is voted at town meeting, and whatever the board chooses to put forward. And then based on performance evaluation, whether you're contracted or non-union, you will still move the same way. So again, everyone will be uh held on the same scale, um there is some reclassification as far as um. The, so there's nine, nine steps or nine grades, and then each of the jobs have been um segmented out to fall into each grade. Um so that has been done, um there is a handful that will be significant uh adjustments. Um two of them are on the general fund budget, two of them are revolving accounts uh that will impact um the general fund. Um I think it's well deserved and it's a time that, this is a great opportunity for us to get this done. Um so I have this uh in front of you this evening, uh laid out in front of you that. It's following our uh employee handbook and uh personnel policies, uh calls out the different uh policies. Uh that we're trying to uh follow. Um and I'm just looking to try to uh get this through tonight, so it will help with the budgeting process um for all the departments. Uh not only for the non-union people, but it also sets um. An expectation that if a union is in negotiations, we can now say that. This impacts the same thing for all of our employees, we're trying to get to it across the board that everyone. Uh is on the same level for the playing field, um and everyone is treated the same way. Uh we are now required, uh anytime we post a position, we are required to show the entire salary. Um scale from uh start uh to max, um so we now have to do that. All employees are eligible to see what everyone makes, it's all public record, so we wanna be able to say, alright, if I'm gonna apply for this job, I know what the starting and and max pay is, so it's. Pretty clear and kind of dry, so that's where we are.
I I appreciate the, all the work that went into this, cause I know I've had concerns with. Job descriptions and people that have over the years taken on additional responsibilities, but yet their job descriptions and salaries. Were not updated to to reflect those, so I I very much appreciate it, esp- especially the equity piece with the um. Um unions, the in the union contracts and just trying to get everybody on that that level playing field, I think especially for the non-union staff, this is gonna be significant and show that. We're we're behind you, we want to support you and we want to make sure that you're, you know, you're treated fairly. I, is that, so the plan is to have this be effective for fiscal year twenty seven?
Correct.
Year?
Yep.
And then, so we would essentially reset everybody based on this scale, assuming it's approved for that FY twenty seven.
Correct.
And then start that cycle of performance evaluations in January.
Correct.
Step increases for FY twenty eight.
Correct, correct.
Okay.
So bas- basically um the direction from the board for the budget purposes was the the two percent COLA.
Yep.
So we've, as people moved into the uh different grades, uh we placed them on the scale right around that two percent mark, so that's where they got placed. Um there are ones that got moved up in the grade, they basically got put at the step one or or the starting email, because it was such a a significant increase, so. Um you know, so that's how we did it, we, there could be a whole process of. Weighing out where they should be placed on the scale, but at least this gets us a starting point on the scale, and now we know uh where everyone needs to move forward, so.
Question? Um just so I kinda clear.
Yep.
Take the veterans agent.
Yep.
Okay, right now we pay them a set price.
Correct.
And I see they're listed as grade four.
Yep.
But how many hours do they work, are we gonna?
It's it's a annual stipend position.
So, but then how do we apply that to a rate?
So, uh again, it's a, it's a rate based on estimated number of hours, so that's pretty much how. The stipends come about, is on average, how many hours are you doing a month, and they, that's how it's been formulated.
Okay.
Now we can set a an a a rate to it. Um and it fluctuates, those hours used and needed fluctuate dramatically, um so whether we chose to go hourly or we chose to keep it as as a stipend. Most communities pay stipend unless it's a, you know, a significant large community.
Right.
Um but that may be a discussion we have in January during the budget season, because I was notified today, I have veterans agent plans to retire. The end of December, so she's already got someone lined up for us to look at uh to take over. Um this individual is doing other communities as well, so we could partner with that with this as well, so.
Okay. Um so if that, this veterans agent steps down. At what grade do we hire the new veterans agent then?
So they would stay in the same grade, we started step one.
Okay, so.
Yep.
Of grade four.
Of grade four, yeah, so they're signed at grade four, um either starting or or depending on. Um employment history, you know, with a um. Experience level, stuff like that, you could you could flex, you could move that.
And where does max come in?
Um max would be basically, perfect example, the billing inspector is at max in his grade. Um our billing spec- we are very lucky to have the billing inspector, we do as far as education, talent and expertise. Um not saying that when he does retire, person that we're replacing that would be at a much lower rate, so. Uh once people start moving towards the max, I think at that point, we really need to look at the whole scale. As a whole, and look at what marking, market conditions have done, and the scale may have to move. And my guess, that would be seven to ten years, so.
I was just gonna say, was there a a recommendation for reevaluating so that we don't run into the same thing again?
Yeah. Right.
So you're thinking every seven to ten years?
Yeah, seven to ten years.
I think in the policy, it should be maybe spelled out, like noted in the policy that it should be relooked at in five to seven years or something, just to get a sense, because.
Sure. Sure.
Five years if we're gonna need significant change in ten years, then that gives us.
Time to prepare for it.
Right.
But, yep.
Or even if it's a seven year time to. It gives us, that year five kind of gives us a couple of years of planning.
Yeah. If I'm, if it's pretty vague, if I remember correctly, that just almost as on an as needed basis, which is.
Yep. Yeah, okay, that works.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion.
So, so this wage compensation schedule would change every year?
So i- if you as assign a two percent COLA, the whole scale moves to two percent.
Okay.
Yep, so that that way i- it just, the whole scales move, is sliding over time. What's happened in years past is, we never given a COLA, no one got steps, and then as new people got hired, they got hired at over the, you know, it just. We paid what the market was paying, and we got off the scale.
So if I come in at step seven.
Yep.
It's gonna be that forty seven ninety, ten years from now, plus the two percent.
Plus two percent each year.
To to factor that in.
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
If I understand correctly, the job descriptions that have been created are job descriptions for the position itself. And not necessarily for the individual doing the position or the individual who may be thinking that they're going to do the position.
Perfect example, we're calling out education requirements. Once the library hits ten thousand, once the town hits ten thousand, the library must have a master's degree. Okay, that's best master of law, so that's that's in the job description now, so we know we're gonna hit that very shortly. And we know at some point, we're gonna have a retirement and replacements, we need to be prepared for that. So people are in the position now grandfathered or, you know, um far as educational, you know, they've on the job training over the years that they're in the position, so.
And also, I, you know, my, one of my big things is performance based, right?
Yep.
And so, just because they're they're in the position currently and doing it and getting these adjustments.
Yeah.
They're still going to be held to the job descriptions and the performance that they should be doing, not that they think that they're they're doing right now.
Correct. Yeah. Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Um just because I think that oftentimes, we've been complacent in not.
Yep.
Agreed.
I I I think the goal would be as the new town administrator comes on, would be to set some goals and objectives for the department heads in July.
Mm-hmm.
And so that way, in six months, in January of next year, we they can have some look back, okay, you met these goals, alright, your evaluation is axed. It will, I I think.
And they will have hopefully a year plus to have relationship building with the town administrator, because I assume the town administrator would be the one performing.
Correct. Yes. Yes.
The department head.
Yep.
Performance reviews and then department heads would would, yeah, ex- yeah, would perf- do that, their employee.
Acceptive view, correct, do their, yes, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so right now, the department heads that have clerical union staff, they have to do this already.
Right.
Um the only department that really doesn't have clerical union is the library, so Carrie's gotta do all her library staff, um so. That's it.
To the chair.
But, sure.
What's the net effect on this?
So the net effect is uh interesting, I I kinda calculated out the cost and at town meeting when we made the adjustments. Um the finance committee made the adjustment for COLAs, it was almost the same amount of money, the two percent of the ninety thousand.
With the ju- reclassification?
Yeah, yep, so if we gave two percent or two and a half percent or whatever, it it's pretty close to being the same.
Total.
Total.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, because we're replacing some people now, um between the planner and the accountant, so those are going down.
Mm-hmm.
And so some of that's being offset to cover some of the others, so as a whole, I I think we're gonna be good.
Um is this easy enough, obviously, to update, so say.
Very easy.
We run into a a string of financial luck and we can hire ourselves a a town engineer.
Correct, yes.
A new position, you know, we can just slide somebody new into this with job descriptions.
Very easy to do. Yep, yep, yep. Yeah, so we write the job description, weigh it out, and then I'll put it in the red grade, yep.
And is there a rationale as to how some of these are classified?
Yeah, actually, it's pretty interesting, um.
I don't need the the detailed detail.
Yeah, so um how this all came about was last year, community of Worcester County hired a very expensive consulting firm. Rawland was part, was a comparable town in the study, so I was reading through it. I took the towns that were comparable to us, and so one, two, three, four, five, six. Fourteen towns of Worcester County where I looked at for population, income per capita, EQV per capita, assessed value, tax levy. In total budget, so basically, they all averaged within where we are, so they're all comparable. And we looked at what they, their classification was and knows the buckets that I used to drive ours. So instead of hiring a consultant to do it, this is how I did it, it was a good starting point, I backed up data to show that towns were comparable. Um and I think it meets our needs.
Yeah, I just was, thank you for that.
So. Yep.
So we don't have staff that are being underpaid compared to other similar communities, they're they're right about.
Correct, yep.
Or, right.
Or why is this position paid at the same level, is this position, like in the same, right, we have all that backup data.
Right.
Correct, yep, we we have backup data. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Great.
Uh this was discussed uh last week at the department head meeting, so they are fully aware of all all this and that it was coming forward tonight as well.
Thank you. I know it's been a big kind of moving cloud over.
Yeah.
For years, decades maybe, so thanks Seth for.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Doing it, now we need to fund it, I know. Um.
Any other questions or?
I would move to adopt the wage classification schedule as presented.
Some motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Alright, Alex.
Hold on, second I.
One minute.
Matt tonight.
Glad you're right. Thank you.
Thanks, Seth.
Absolutely.
Yep, this is, this is great, I'm glad you're here.
I won't be here long enough, then it benefits me, so.
Alright, um are there any future agenda requests from the board?
Uh yes, I would like to, there were some items that were in the minutes that were not cleaned up. From the last meeting in regards to the um uh in regards to the streets. And I'd like to either bring in Chris Kowalski or the planning board to go over and figure out. What items fit the street acceptance that are not street acceptance and what has not been done that meets those criteria. Um uh because of what I see going on in the town right now, uh I think we have, need to have a clear picture of that, so I'd like to put that on the next agenda.
Okay, we'll have to.
Or put it on an agenda.
Let me check your availabilities.
Yeah, we'll check availability and.
Yeah.
About hearing.
Oh.
If you're talking about those specific.
Well, no, couldn't we not, no, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so just for clarification here, you're looking to understand what needs to be basically completed for the street acceptance?
Well, there were things like uh, you know, mudslides.
Yeah.
Uh there was some mention to me of the pump stations. I just want clarity on what fits in the street acceptance that has to be done yet, or has already been completed, so.
And for any street or for?
No, for those streets, uh for Arrowhead and and the other ones.
For the ones that, okay.
Yeah, for those streets.
Okay, so what, basically what still needs to be done?
Yeah.
For, okay.
Yeah, cause there was a list of.
Street acceptance, I guess, basically.
Yeah, and does it fit, uh whatever has to be done, does it fit the regulations of street acceptance? Or does it fall under something else that we have to deal with?
Okay, alright, we'll take a look at schedules and see what we.
Try to clean that up a little bit, that's all.
Okay.
I mean, if I can, we have the, sorry Jen, we do have the uh road acceptance policy that we adopted in March thirty first of twenty twenty five.
Yeah, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um that. Has speaks to some of it, it doesn't speak to the specifics of what may still, may or may not still be outstanding for roads that we aren't laying out, but.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Um this is a, lays out the process that I don't think everything was followed.
And.
Right, right, no, it's it's, yeah, it's.
And I think it's it's gonna be different depending on. The subdivision or with the conditions or anything, so it's not like it's a consistent thing for each one.
Right. Right, but there there was mentioned that there were some things that were still debatable.
Um.
That we wanted to check into, and I'm just kinda bringing it forward to saying, let's just find out what there is and. If it falls under these things, that be fixed, let's let's just tell them it's gotta be fixed and. If it falls under subdivision rules specifically, but not street acceptance rules, then we need to deal with it in a little different way. So that's what I'm looking at.
Okay, I I don't.
Cause I think the people that were here also deserve some clarity on that too, what they did.
Okay, can we, can we limit the item to just clarification as to what? The discussion was on outstanding items?
Yeah, I'm not looking for a vote on it, not at all, I'm looking for clarity on where does it fit?
Okay. Okay.
Is this a street acceptance item or is this a subdivision item, or is this a sewer sewer item, like. You know, somebody mentioned to me that um the street shouldn't be approved because of the um water, uh what are we looking for?
Pump station.
Because of the pump station.
Okay.
The street shouldn't be, now does that fall under street acceptance rules or subdivision rules, so for me, I'd like some clarity on that. And whoever we can get here.
Yeah, sewer extension permit, cause like sewer extension permit falls under the board of public work, so that's you.
Right.
You know, oversee that, and where does that connect to the, you know, so it's good to have the workflow and who's responsible for what detail.
Right. Right.
Okay.
Right.
Alright, well, we'll work on that. Any other requests? Okay, um upcoming meetings, um just a reminder, we have the town administrator interviews on Wednesday and Thursday this week, that's November twelfth and thirteenth. Uh we have special town meeting on November twentieth, we have regular um select board meeting November twenty fourth. Uh we have the tax classification hearing, which is December first, that's an off night, um off meeting night, so just a reminder on that one. And then December eighth um for our next regular meeting after that. Is there anything else to come before the board before we adjourn to our executive? Is there anything else to come before the board before we adjourn to executive session?
I move to adjourn to executive session for reason number two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel subject treasurer collector contract. And for reason number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, subject DCR sewer matter to return to open session.
Some motion, is there a second? Any discussion? Roll call, Alex.
All right, second to nine.
One minute.
Matt tonight.
Glad you're right. We are seven thirty one.